7, 2024, Board of Douglas County Commissioners, 4 o'clock work session. So, thank you for joining us. We have two fun topics for this evening. And one is the Consolidated Fire District Number One budget. And then we will also talk about our capital improvement plan. And I believe Kami is going to kick us off. Would that be right?
Yes, Commissioners, but I do want to take a moment real quickly before Kami starts and just introduce that today is Sean Peterson, our new deputy county administrator's first aide, and it is his first meeting. So, he's joining us today, and it's really apropos because his, part of his area's responsibility are going to be Consolidated Fire District One and Public Works and planning and zoning. So, nothing like drinking from a fire hose. Welcome to CIP.
So to speak. All right. Thank you for joining us. We're really glad to have you here.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Kami, I'll let you get started.
All right, Commissioners, good afternoon. You have Consolidated Fire District Number One 2025 budget in front of you. 2020 was the first year of tax support for CFD One, and this budget shows a flat mill levy of 5.5 mils, the same as they've had the entire time. Their assessed value growth in their district is something I wanted to make you aware of. The total assessed value growth was only 2.15% this year. That low growth rate compared to the overall county growth rate is due to state assessed values. The state assessed, or the state of Kansas, sets these values for us. And the 2023 state assessed values saw a 57% increase, which we thought might have something changed for this year. And the state did follow through with a correction this year, changing that to a decrease of negative 5.8% for 2024. So, they came back and made quite a large correction. They don't give us a lot of information on that.
Kami, just for folks that are new to this, can you say what that's, what falls under state assessed?
It would be state assessed utilities. So, yeah, the Lawrence Energy Center is inside the footprint for CFD One, and that is the largest piece of our state assessed valuation. The real estate and personal property values did see similar growth to the county, but that did not reflect in as large of a value. So, that's how we came to the 2% growth rate. Another thing we would like to mention is the staffing count. There are currently six FTE at full-time employees at Consolidated Fire Number One. This budget does include an additional FTE for a battalion chief, which would make that seven FTE for 2005. Another concern is the health insurance plan. They are, the employees of CFD Number One are on an individual health insurance plan separate from the county, and they have seen a 30% increase in health insurance premiums since 2001. Their current provider will not estimate any increases for 2025 at this time. We have asked for those. Currently, they were paying $116,000, although with some staffing changes, that cost we have recalculated is just a little bit lower right now. It would cost them $124,000 to move to our plan, as they all currently sit in their selections. You know, employees get to select which plan type they get. So, we have budgeted, in the current budget, $167,000 as a maximum cost, depending on the type of plan elected by employees, to move to county insurance.
And Kami, so the price currently is 116, and then, but the, the, the parallel cost to be under the county insurance would be 124,000. It's not an additional, it's just moving from one to the other?
That's correct. It's not additional at all. And I know I've got a lot of numbers here, so stop me if you want.
And the 167 is in case people are selecting different plans?
It is to assume they all selected family plans, which would be the most cost. So, that is, that's the reason it's budgeted that way at this time in the proposed budget. So, then, we have had some employee changes, and that number changes with what the employees select. There's also additional staff time that is dedicated to reconciling and paying invoices for the separate health insurance plan for CFD. Members of our HR, payroll, and accounts payable spend some considerable time doing the specific paperwork that needs to be done in order to pay their current insurance plan. And staff-
Going to ask again, and those are, that's county staff covering CFD One rather than CFD One staff, then it would no longer be processing that?
That's right. They lean on our HR and insurance professionals for that. And they're not able to get assistance for claims assistance or benefit questions because they are a fully insured plan through this third party. And so, that information is not available to our HR folks. They, the, that would take away that barrier. If they moved on to the county plan, the transition would be simple. It would be more simple than the current processes. It would eliminate those functions for those employees at the county, those extra functions. They would be able to just do as they do for county employees. The county does have a richer plan for coverage than CFD currently has, but our deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums are higher, and that would have to be a discussion plan with the employees of CFD One, just the transition of that.
And have the employees been part of that discussion, that there's another option that's being looked at?
Not yet, because, you know, it's a little ahead of schedule for that conversation. And we wanted to make sure we talked to the commission first.
Thanks.
I do get the feeling from chief that they are aware that this is being discussed, but not that any decisions have been made at all.
Yes, they are aware of discussions going on.
And I want to introduce interim fire chief John Mathis, who is our interim fire chief for Consolidated Fire District One.
So, a couple more things in the budget to note. Market merit is included the same as you included for the county employees. So, we have put those figures in there. Fund balance totals, the current beginning fund balance that's estimated for 2025 is approximately 18% at $350,003. They also include a transfer to equipment reserve, like they did last year, where, where the commission started the equipment reserve fund. And we will return a year in transfers in early 2025 to approve the 2024 transfer if they're, as their budget fits in line with that. And they are scheduled for the R and R and budget hearing on the same day as the county budget, on Wednesday, August 28th.
I just want to point out to Commissioners, I wanted to introduce chief Mathis, and I wanted to also note that on the health insurance issue, so we would charge, this is not dissimilar to what we do for other organizations like the Health Department, Extension Council, and some townships that choose to be on our plan. And then, the independent, the district, so the taxing district of CFD One would pay the full employer share of that premium. There'd be no subsidy of that premium by the county. And Commissioners, we just stand for any questions you might have on the Consolidated Fire District One budget.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Kami. And nice to meet both of, both of you joining us this evening. I'm just curious about the timeline. Do we, because, how soon will the switch over to healthcare be possible? Is that something that will, you know, we're, this is, we're talking about 2025 budget, so these are 2025, $25. Do we expect that our typical enrollment time, so sorry, of, of late spring and early summer is when those employees would be able to roll on? Or is there going to be a special enrollment process to help that transition period?
I might ask Michelle Shpere, our HR director, to come forward. From what I understand, their plan ends in, towards the end of this year, December. And so, we would probably add them to our plan early, and we can do that because we're self-insured, and we have that flexibility. So, we would probably roll them onto our plan early. And then, they would be a part of our open enrollment process next year.
That's correct, yeah. They, they do renew January every year. So, it's just easier to, to cut their plan off then. We can bring them on anytime. Our, like she said, is good with our plan, but it's probably a cleaner transition with their deductibles and to just do it when, when their plan ends.
Sure. That's great to hear, and I thank you for clarifying, Sarah. And sorry for coughing into the mic, everybody. I wanted to just make sure that it was as smooth as possible, and just wanted to clarify that it wouldn't impact the budget if we had to wait for a period of, of time. So, happy to know it'll be easy.
Yes, I'm curious, is this, is this an option that was talked about when Consolidated was first formed, or-
It was.
And they chose to stay as they are, and now-
It was cheaper.
It was cheaper at the time?
So, you know, and at that point in time, when we did the consolidation, we were really worried about those issues, and they felt like the plan was workable, and it was cheaper. We, we figured this would happen. Eventually, the cost of their plan would meet up with ours. And, you know, when it's more, it's not as good of a plan, it's more work for staff, and it begins to exceed the cost of what our plan would cost, it just seemed like this was the year to make sense to make the transition.
If you'll forgive me for a point of order, I meant to address the community that's here and say that at work sessions, we do not take public comment. It's just for Commissioner questions. We also take no votes and no action. However, we do have our 5:30 business meeting directly following this, where we do take public comment if there are things about this conversation that you'd like to let us know about. Forgive me for missing that part.
Sarah, I'm just looking at fund balance, and this is not one that, we don't have a fund balance policy for this specific department. Is that correct, or funding authority?
Correct. We don't, I mean, we don't have a separate set of financial policies for Consolidated Fire District One. As a general rule, they follow our policies, but our policy doesn't specifically call out CFD One.
Okay, thanks.
And I'd say, you know, this has been, they're, I think their fund balance, their first year, was it? Yeah, so we, we've had some history. We really want to get to a point where we can put more away for their equipment replacement. They have a lot of very old equipment. And so, we need, I'm, I, it's just one of those things that over the next couple of years, we have to be really cautious about. We've worked hard to maintain this static mill levy of 5.5 that we sort of promised when we consolidated. And, you know, if assessed valuation grows at 2%, we won't be able to do that very long. We'll have to think about raising the levy.
And maybe that's my follow-up question. It's not maybe, it is my follow-up question with the chief. The fund balance in this budget increases. Can you talk about maybe some of the equipment that you think is in need of replacement with that fund balance?
Yes, sir. And I've found Chief Baxter's fleet replacement plan, but I know currently, our oldest piece of equipment is 1994. And be seeing it fleet soon. There's a, it has some major maintenance issues, and we have several pieces of equipment that are 20-plus years old, and-
You need to get close to that mic, too.
Oh, sorry.
Welcome.
Sorry. I said, from the plan that I've seen in place and seen the apparatus, we have at least three that are 20-plus years old. One, 1994, which is the year after I started in the fire service. The maintenance costs are going up. We also, on one of our, actually only 11-year-old engines, had some major engine work done the last few days. So, the costs, the maintenance costs are, I don't know if creeping up is quite the right word for what's going on with the fleet. And there's a total of 40 apparatus in the fleet.
And the fleet travels a lot of distance, more than a traditional city fire department or an individual township. It's, there's a lot of square miles covered by Consolidated Fire One.
So, Commissioners, as we think about future work session topics, that might be a good topic for us to cover, is to go over where the state of equipment is now, how we might use some of this fund balance to address that. And that, we'll schedule that with Sarah, but just something for us to think about.
Yes, sir. Just for some information, current build times are running two to two and a half years.
Have we purchased any apparatus since Consolidated came together?
Yeah, I believe we have. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I thought we had.
I think we had an engine.
And I know we had one in ARPA, a truck.
I believe there's at least, I will look it up for you to confirm, but my understanding is Tinder and possibly some brush trucks.
Yeah, I do remember at least some, two, maybe three pieces of equipment with ARPA dollars is what I recall off the top of my head. I was also curious, I appreciate the question, Commissioner Kelly, and do you think it's something to talk more about, especially as we're also talking with LDCFM about equipment needs currently and projected into the future? I think, to me, those are combined conversations. I'm curious, of course, I'm not going to remember the name correctly, but with other, with county fleets, otherwise, we participate in, is it Midwest Regional? Kami, Sarah, do you know what I'm talking about?
Mid-America Regional Council.
Mid-America Regional Council. Does that, is that applicable to fire apparatus or specialized equipment? Or is it, okay, I just wondered if it, we were working a separate process for the type of equipment that CFD One has, and maybe LDCFM as well? And maybe those are two distinct processes, purchasing processes, otherwise, I think that would be helpful for me to have a better grasp of, so that we're looking at the totality of those circumstances and what the avenues for equipment replacement looks like and how to plan for that accordingly.
So, I don't think you inherited like a replacement schedule for apparatus when you came on. I know that's been really recently, but I don't think we've had that yet, have we?
We've started one. It was, I was working on it with chief Baxter in this last year.
And my, my other question was, do we, have we thought about a strict replacement schedule for PPE? Like, we're trying to replace a third each year, or whatever that timeframe works out to keep us current?
I know some has been replaced. I don't know if there's a schedule for it, per se. Also, some wildland gear has, has shown up from a grant just recently. There's some other big-ticket items, SCBA, etc. I don't know if there's been a plan, how they fit into that.
Is our, our PPE, our bunker gear and wildland gear and our SCBA, are they all current for, you know, PA standards? Or do we have some that are being used that have fallen off that schedule?
I have no idea on the PP, on the bunker gear itself.
Okay.
We've, we've got work to do in this place in terms of establishing those replacement schedules.
Another question. Can you talk about stations? I know there's at least one station in Stoll that's been iffy for a while. What are our needs in the future going to be for stations?
Actually, Dennis Snodgrass was out looking at that station again today, possibly with some maintenance issues. It probably needs to be replaced. I asked, and I asked if we can, him just reach out, see if we could get a county engineer to look at that building.
This Stoll?
It's the most likely need to be replaced. Big Springs gets brought up also. However, they both fill with their location, an important ISO need as far as location, within five miles. There's some moving one, or just getting, eliminating one would create some big holes for the taxpayers that would really raise their insurance rates. So, it's on the radar, but there's a lot to go into, so even moving a mile for either of them.
And I believe most of our stations are owned, but I think it's Stoll the only one that's rented? This might be a Sarah question. It's the only one currently? Okay.
If Commissioners are done, we can transition to CIP unless we've got other questions or things we want to follow up on.
Thank you so much for being here. I do think a work session, as things kind of get into the conversation further, would be really great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn this over to Brooke and Chad. I'm going to ask our Director of Building and Ground, Jimmy Wilkins, and our Director of Capital Projects, Jay Zemrashid, to come to the table. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm just going to make this full screen here. I'm going to take a brief moment and just go over the CIP, the facilities projects that we have been working on since we last spoke. Before I begin, I just want to give a brief overview of the allocation process. The amount that the county allocates to the CIP typically will align with the county's growth in value, up to 7%. The 2025 allocation to the CIP includes a 5% growth factor over the prior year. And the way that we do this between facilities projects and road and bridge projects is we have a funding split of that allocation that's made in the general fund. The 2025 proposed transfer of approximately $5.4 million is split, how it is on this screen, 1.7 million goes to the facilities projects, and around 3.6 million will go to supplement road and bridge projects. Last year, at the fiscal year end of 2023, this commission authorized a transfer of $5 million from the general fund, and this transfer went to bolster two projects. $3.4 million was able to be allocated to the station expansion project for LDCFM, and $1.6 million was allocated to the JLEC master plan revision and expansion project. This would be in anticipation of additional fees related to the design and construction documents for that, that large project. Our 2024 expenditures for both road and bridge projects and facilities projects is estimated to be around $15.5 million. The biggest pull of that would be for facilities and CRP projects at around $11.1 million, and then $4.4 million for road and bridge projects. Again, that's an estimate. Those numbers may change by year end. Commissioners, I also wanted to talk a little bit about our philosophy for CIP versus CRP. So, we have our capital improvement plan. And really, the best way that I like to kind of frame my thoughts around this is, you know, when we have a big CIP project, is it over $50,000? And does it add value to an existing structure? That, for me, is typically the easiest way that I can put that into a bucket. For the capital replacement program, those projects are typically projects that restore value to an existing structure, and sometimes they might be under $50,000. But we do have a little bit of cross areas there with, with the way that we classify those projects. But generally, that's our philosophy of how we put projects into the CIP or the CRP, which is the capital replacement program. We've got a couple of new projects that you see on your list. The, the one at the top of the list is that, again, that LDCFM station expansion. That project is slated to cost the county a little over $5 million over the next few years for the capital portion of that project, not the operations. The, we've got a storage garage for criminal justice services, youth services, parking lot improvements for the JLEC building, a public safety building. And then, a couple of these projects, I wanted to add on here because they are new. However, they were added last year. It was a need. They were under $50,000, so they fell within Sarah's authority to approve. But that's that Douglas County Correctional Facility Access Control Panel upgrade, as well as the Fairgrounds Access Control Panel upgrade. Those are new projects to you, but they're actually already complete. So, I just wanted to note that here. And then, we've got an additional capital replacement project for the youth services, criminal justice services, North Campus, mezzanine security mesh replacement out there. And then, we've got some completed projects. The one that I highlighted here on this slide is the Fairgrounds Maintenance Building. That project is complete. It's a beautiful structure there. And then, we've gotten some heating and air conditioning and structure replaced at quite a few of our county facilities as well. And then, this is my last slide, but we have got a lot of really big projects that are currently in progress. As this community is likely aware, the Historic Courthouse is undergoing some pretty significant renovations right now. So, we've got our above-grade stonework masonry getting ready to start. The waterproofing is kind of finishing up. We're hoping to, to get that completed by the end of the year. Tony and his team in Emergency Communications is working on the Stratford Tower replacement project. They're moving some existing infrastructure there for communications. The JLEC master plan revision and expansion, which you guys have heard a lot about. And then, we've started the, the work on this building here for the HVAC replacement. Wow, this is a big list. We've got the Treasurer's Sixth Street Satellite Office currently under renovation right now, and I think folks are going to be moving in there towards the end of the year. So, that's moving right along. And then, last but not least, we've got our beautiful hearing room renovation in progress right now. And so, we, we've got a lot of projects in progress right now. I'd be happy to stand for any questions about facilities projects. I can answer questions about how we fund them, but if you have specific project questions, I will turn it to my colleagues here.
Brooke, it's like you read my mind. While you're on this slide, since these, this is a good, it is kind of a long list, but a substantial and important list, can you give us a quick sense of how, where these funds are allocated from? For example, I believe the Treasurer's Office was ARPA money, correct? Can you give a, a quick list of generally where these are funded from?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. So, most of the projects here are funded through the county's capital improvement plan. I would like to note on the Historic Courthouse Stonework Restoration Project, we did receive some funding from the State Historic Preservation Office. I believe we will get $90,000 in a grant that is funded through that office, but we will also get tax credits for that project, we, which we will eventually sell, and we will realize some revenue from that. And then, let's see, the Treasurer's Sixth Street Satellite Office, that project is funded mostly from the capital improvement plan, but we do have some supplemental funding from ARPA to the tune of $650,000. So, that helped bolster that, the funding for that project specifically. I think we're also going to be getting tax credits for the BOCC hearing room renovation. Anything that we do to our historic structures, and we maintain consistency with the State Historic Preservation Office, we are eligible for tax credits for those projects. So, what that means for me in finance is that I assign a ledger key, and I track every single expenditure related to that project, so that when we need to get a good reporting or a sense of how much we've spent, we can quickly just spit that out, so.
We also have some insurance proceeds from the water damage for that room, too, don't we?
So, there was a little bit, but it's really, I mean, it's going to barely cover the cost of what it was to do, repair the damage of the JLE building. And those are already going to be used to, is that what we're talking about?
I was talking about the hearing room, but we have, we also have head of water damage in the jail.
Yes, and, yes, and, the question does apply to the jail a little bit. It's a little bit offset, but probably not much of a gain.
Yeah, Jay, I think, we think it's around 150, 180,000 that's available to help towards the BOCC hearing room.
More than one kind of water damage in one calendar year is not great.
Right.
And fire. Commissioners, do you have questions?
I have a question about our road and bridge. I don't know if you have the ability to show the, it's on page two of our- I don't know if you have the ability to show the, it's on page two of our, well, page 19 of our packet, but page two of the capital improvement plan. It's the one that has the line graph. You know which one I'm talking about, Brooke, or Chad, maybe?
Are we done talking about structures that you want to move to road and bridge?
Yeah, I wasn't sure. Are we? Did you, are we done talking, are we talking about structures or are we moving on to road and bridge? Maybe I went too fast.
Commissioners, have any other questions?
Yeah, maybe we pause on structures. I didn't have any more. We've had lots of conversations about structures. But maybe while Jimmy's still here, I want to say nice job on the fair the last, I know that is a huge amount of work for your team and and really appreciate all your work.
I appreciate that. I can't take credit for it. We have a great team at the Fairgrounds, and they, once again this year, were superb.
Yeah, awesome work.
I did have a constituent bring up an issue with electricity at the building 21. That probably fell on your radar.
Yeah, we had an issue and it turned out to be an evergy problem. We contacted them and they were out the same day, had to run a new line and had everybody back up and running.
And this, the new panel replacement, was that related at all?
No, unrelated.
All right, thanks.
I would say on the structure, on facilities, we are on track on every project in terms of timeline, with the exception of the below-ground waterproofing. And we do hope it'll wrap up soon, but it's kind of messy around the courthouse right now. I'll see if I can find that unless Chad, you, did you guys find what Commissioner Kelly was talking about?
I think I could share my screen.
Yep, go for it. Yep, you can.
If I have permission. Is that the graph you're talking about?
Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about. And I, first of all, I just want to say how great this report is. It's always wonderful to read. But the orange line jumped out to me a little bit, especially after 2024. You know, we sort of hover around that CIP allocation, and then all of a sudden, we make a very large jump and stay consistently high. Can you help me maybe understand what I don't understand about that?
Yes, and that's, it's good that we are able to show this over several years because, you know, the thing about the CIP, we do projects that take multiple years to design and bid, and then in some cases, multiple years to build. And when we have big projects on the radar, and we can go back to 2017 to see the construction of Route 458 out by Clinton Lake, it actually went in 2017 and 18, so that was like a $6 million project in this area, and we saved in advance of that. The same thing is happening in this graph going forward. The other thing about these graphs is, when you look at them in current year, looking backwards and forwards, looking forwards always goes higher.
Okay.
Because we are saying, here's our, you know, available funding, here are the projects we want to do. As we try to accomplish that work, we always, the schedules are always slipping. And so, worst case scenario, we would be spending $10 million in 2026. It'll probably flatten out as we get to that point. But we have, what we have to do is basically say that that's going to be the year that we end this state bidding, and it's the Walker Rosa Drive project. It will, it will bleed over into 2027 in payments, so that'll flatten out. But but it is true that we have, looking forward, some high expenditures relative to looking backward. And part of that, of course, is this, this line will continue to trend upward with inflation as costs increase. We're trying to still do the same amount of work. And so then, just while we're on this, the green line is our outside funding. That's typically KDOT funds, and it occasionally is some grant funding. But the blue line is your allocations year to year.
And that KDOT funding isn't expected to take a bump for, like, Walker Rosa Drive and some of those other pieces, or are we just not counting that, I mean, we have a match that goes to them as opposed to that they're funding our project? Would that be fair?
Yeah, KDOT is not funding any of our projects. That KDOT amount in the green line is the federal fund exchange every year. And they give us an option of either just taking the cash or getting a project funded through them, and we lose, we lose 10% if we take the cash. But at the end of the day, that's a better way to approach those for us.
Chad, I would, I guess I want to point out, is this your budgeted allocation in blue? Not if we have year-end funds that we had add to it? I know I kept all of those last year for facilities projects, but this is your budgeted fund amount at that. So if we do have year-end funds that are above our policy and we move them to CIP, it would not be included in that blue number, that blue line?
That is mostly true. Those are CIP allocations that are discussed every year at this point. The only exception is that I did put the 2022 adjustment. So 2022 is high there because of an end-of-year CIP allocation. We kind of refer to those differently from building to building here, so. I think you also had a question about end-of-year allocation and how that relates.
I want to finish up with this. So I think what I'm seeing is, you know, we see a lot of volatility there between 2014 and 2024, and that sort of just depends on the projects where we bid them. What we're seeing in that orange line is, I don't want to say worst-case scenario, but that that. We would have to change our CIP allocation fairly significantly to meet those, those needs. Is that correct, or am I off on that?
No, we would not. So maybe look at a different table here. So every time we do this, we look at the next five years as if we're going to spend everything we have. The intent is not to have cash. The intent is to get projects done. Five years, six years out in 2030, which is one year beyond our current planning window, with the allocations that we are anticipating, we would be down to $200,000. That's not probably going to happen, but we are trying to spend what we have, and that's why it looks that way.
All right, thank you. That's.
And you can go back, you know, three, five years and look at those CIP reports, and it's pretty much the same story. So and you look at the average, that's what's interesting, is the average of what we're spending is basically the average of what we're getting.
Okay.
Because we've funded CIP on a regular basis, but we're, we spend it based on projects, so that's that volatility.
Yes, and of course, on our side, we're adjusting all the time to what funding's available, which projects are priorities, which projects are advancing in the design process. Do we have easements? Is it, you know, a good time to bid this? Did the bids come in good? I mean, all these things affect our, our ability to pull the trigger and spend that money. So the promises we're making on this are going to get adjusted.
I had a question on 1061. I know we've got a variety of projects that are related to that roadway, and I think some of those have been moving around in time to kind of limit the disruption for that. Can you just talk about timeframe?
Yeah, there's a section in the, in the front-end report here about road safety improvements. And I gave you all of our previous projects there that we've done, just as a point of reference. And then when you look at planned improvements for this current five-year CIP, all of those road improvements are on 1061. And what we did there is, we've got, we're getting easements right now from landowners to do that project next year. That's the top of the list there, N 700 Road to N 900 Road. It's five culverts we want to replace that are pretty big. We're also going to do some pavement replacement, shoulder building, and a, and a major ditch reconstruction. The remaining three projects there are what we've isolated as a high priority for 1061, looking ahead at traffic levels and the fact that that's now going to be our highest-level road that has not been improved. And we put those in 2029 based on funding and workload and trying to balance these things. So 2029 is our, it was 2028 last year. We've put that to 2029. That change was primarily generated by our bridge inspection report, which just came out. We made some adjustments there.
Did you have surprises in the bridge inspection?
Not really surprises. We, we moved some things, reordered them. I gave you that current prioritization printout right there. And when we did that, there were some projects where you got to do the bridge now because of a conflict with something else. So an example of that is on the Farmer's Turnpike, we want to replace a bridge that the trucks use to get from the industrial area in Lawrence. We don't want to have that going while the SLT is under construction, so we're pushing that forward, and that'll hopefully be under construction next year. So similar kind of decisions, and based on where we are in design on projects. And it, and it started to pile up in 2028, so we, we thought, well, it works better to put the road project in 29.
We had a conversation about open space funding and projects at Lone Star Lake, and that, and that some of those were built in here. If we didn't use open space funding, well, then those kind of pull back out?
Those are all pretty small dollar amounts, so, you know, we probably wouldn't be as aggressive on the schedule, but it would be fairly easy to find some ways to pay for that within this. You know, we save money on projects every year, so. We could probably easily balance out still doing some of those projects if we had to, if we don't use the open space funds.
So Chad, I just want to make sure I understand the pages. Maybe go to the Washington Creek Culvert. Thank you.
Full screen. Okay.
So we have the CIP allocation down the left-hand side, and then the costs. Can you explain the end-of-year reallocation to me?
Yes. So this, this kind of shows the history of how the project evolved and also how it was funded. So in 2019, we said, okay, it's time to get this old culvert replaced. We thought it would be a $300,000 project. If you go back to the 2019 CIP, you probably see a $200,000 allocation and maybe $100,000 the next year. At the end of 2019, we had some savings on some other projects. When we got to, after January 1st and ran all of our reports for expenditures, we had spent less on the previous year projects than what we had shown in our CIP. We took the $58,325 off another project and put it on this one to help it along. Then we showed the $90,000, so at the time, we must have been thinking that this was a $385,000 project or something. We started to do some engineering, buy some easements. We put another $14,499 in the same way by balancing the next year after saving some money. And then that continued. And then about that time, we realized that the only way to get this done was to put guardrail on the road, raise the road afoot, and rebuild 700 feet of roadway. The price went up. We relocated the channel. We decided to do a cast-and-place structure. So all of these decisions in the design led to higher cost. So in that CIP year in 2022, we were able to put $526,000 of savings from other projects on it to start covering those. And so when you saw it in 2023 and we asked for the $600,000, you also saw the $526. And so now you were getting a sense, when you looked at that in 2023, that we were spending over $1 million on this. When we got to the end of '23, we had bid the project, and so we knew that we had an excess of $54,000 for that project. So in parentheses, it's a negative. It got pulled out of that balance and put on another project. So it's just our way of making sure that when we save money, we can put that on other work.
I really appreciate you walking us through that, because I think this is where I think that chart with the yellow line can get a little deceptive, because as projects get started and then adjusted, your team makes changes. And and some of many of these things we see in our packets all the time. I don't know if the public knows that, but these are the changes that come before the Board of Commissioners. But just the history of that there is really helpful for me as a commissioner. I hope it's helpful for the public to understand, you know, sort of how these projects, sometimes we have cost overruns, but on other projects, sometimes we bid them much lower or the costs weren't as much as we thought. But the long-term planning that's happening allows us to cover for those and prioritize. So I appreciate you walking us through.
And Chad and Brooke do this on every project, and I think there's probably, what, 100 active projects at least? How many you have, Chad?
946 in our database and our, if we take out completed and inactive, it gets me down to 78. And I was going to show you how this works in the funding, because it's, it's really easy to do this this way. If we look at what you were just asking about, that's the end-of-year allocations. And if we zero in on just year 2023, because I, I don't want to give the sense that we're pushing money around just, you know, hundreds of columns of dollars. So that's the full picture for 2023. We had some savings. You know, we finished up this road project at the top and had $157,000 savings, similar savings on some projects. We saw some cost increases on this project and put money on it. But those are the, the relative dollar amounts that that we're pushing around when we do this.
I would say sort of the, like, every project I do at my house, Chad, is more expensive than what it was originally bid at or what I thought it was going to cost. So the fact that we're getting some savings and are able to apply that to other projects, I think, shows the, the value of our team's work, so thank you.
Well, that's sort of true, but it's also true that if you do this for a while, you learn to overestimate. We do. We, we try to be conservative and make sure that we're not planning things we can't afford.
Necessary with a cash-funded, pay-as-you-go CIP. We have to do this all the time.
And when you look at that accounting, I was just going to follow up that whole conversation with the Walker Rosa Drive. You can see that in 2017, when we started saving for that project, there's been a lot of accounting to keep track of and a lot of, you know, opportunities to put money on it that we've taken, so. And in that case, we've got the federal funds from KDOT early on here. We don't have partner funds at this point, so that's, that's a continuing conversation related to one of the agenda items today, so.
And yours might be a record on longest project from funding to completion, but I don't know. There are probably some longer ones in the history, in the history.
I think it's just worth repeating that all of this is cash-funded, that we have to save up for these projects and apply the cash to these projects in order to save up enough to be able to execute them, as opposed to being able to take out debt to manage projects. So it's a lot to manage. It's also what I think is a really responsible way to, to do these projects, and I'm really proud of the process.
Yeah, I can't emphasize that enough. I was, when I was the stormwater engineer, we did $15 million in 10 years. We had to issue bonds for that, and it really tied our hands on, you know, we've committed to do this project. If suddenly there's another priority, there's no discussion about even starting that. And whereas with this approach, you know, we get our bridge inspection report where we're able to flip things around and, and really kind of understand where we stand on funding and also on priorities. It's a great way to operate.
And would I be right if I pull out that the only kind of debt-funded project in our book here would be the Lawrence Douglas County Fire Medical Station 1, because it was a city project and we're just paying our share of it?
Yeah, so the city issued the debt, and we are paying them cash each year towards their debt payment. We do anticipate debt being issued for the, the Judicial Law Enforcement Center and Public Safety Building projects. I think those are it. And then our current debt issuance is the only active current debt issuances we have are refinanced bonds on, on this building, I think, and a little bit of 911, so.
Yeah, that's pretty great. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other questions? I can't tell you how much we enjoy reading about the bridges and culverts. I mean, I love the photos and, you know, I can picture where many of these are or visit them. It's, it's just a, it's a great volume of work, and we really appreciate what goes into giving us this, this level of detail for it, but also just the, the care that you take for our roads and bridges in our rural areas.
We will add this report to our, our website under our Socrata Open Budget link, and it'll, the full report will be there.
And Sarah, when does this budget get a vote? And Sarah, when does this budget get a vote?
So it is a part of your vote on the 2025 budget. You will adopt the CIP when you adopt the operating budget.
And that is August 28th scheduled?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any final thoughts? If not, we are recessed until our 5:30 business meeting, and thank you so much for all being here.